Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
So, an executive session, legal advice was received, no votes were taken. Peter. Peter, are you ready? Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask for motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Yes.
Dr. Sanquiony.
If I could ask to move to the first item on the new business.
Okay. Yep.
Consent agenda.
You want to do the consent first?
Yeah, we typically do the consent agenda and then we'll move it up.
So, on the personnel action, we have two appointments, online course coordinator at the high school, Kathryn Johnson, and assistant to the unified basketball team here at the high school, Michelle Bennett.
Okay, I'm going to ask for motion to move up item number 10 or 11. Doesn't, 11, doesn't have a number. It is infinite. Spotlight on success, state champion cheerleaders.
Second.
All those in favor? Dr. Sanquiony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. It's a pleasure tonight. I think this is the fourth or fifth time we've had an opportunity to recognize state champions, and tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize the four-time state champion Tiverton High School cheerleaders, four times. I mean, that's, that's pretty amazing.
Very impressive.
That's certainly worth recognizing. So, I'd like to introduce their coach, Coach McDermott, at this time, and invite you up to the podium to talk a little bit about your season and your successes.
I get nervous talking in front of people, so anyway. So, these kids, a lot of them started with me as freshmen, and I've watched these girls grow and really work together as a team. They've, they've come such a long way. We work really, really hard. It's not typically a lot of the things that you see at games. When we compete, it's like they're in a whole other world, and they do a wonderful job. And just watching them, you know, before they compete, and they get stressed, and then they go out on the mat, and it's an adrenaline that they have, and they do such a marvelous job. So, we went to New England this year. We compete against Connecticut, Vermont, Massachusetts, then it's the teams in Rhode Island, and we ended up coming in six out of like 15 teams. What Tiverton lacks is the girls don't have tumbling skills when we compete against teams where the whole team tumbles and we just sit there like, anyway. But, they did such a wonderful job. And when I first started, I used to practice at Fort Barton, since that used to let me use her gym area, so, so nice to, and I used to coach her many years ago, but we're not going to talk about that. But, the kids did a wonderful job, I'm very proud of them. The majority of the team graduates this year, and then we'll have to see what next year, but I will miss a lot of these girls, that's for sure. Not their moods, but I will miss them. They did a great job.
You can say that.
Service, actually, and then I realized that everything's okay, but I just couldn't think of a better example of your perseverance, respect, and your dedication, the core values of Tiverton High School, and what this team and you girls all represent. So, congratulations again, really. Gabrielle Galardo. Mackenzie Galardo. Kaylee Johnson. Juliana Manusis. Madison Melvin. Alyssa Rodriguez. Charlene Silva. Selena Souza. Chloe Viveras. And then, first, I know she, did the other Ms. McDermott make it this evening? I don't think, so I just, just want to give acknowledgement to the assistant coach, Kristen McDermott, who's not here, but of course, congratulate Kristen for her support of the girls.
Yep. So, I'm going to ask for a motion to move up item 11A, Tiverton Prevention Coalition, five signs of mental health. Is there a second? All those in favor? Okay, Mrs. Black.
Hello, this is me and my, I don't know if I, my friend Mia. We're both part of the Tiverton High School Prevention Coalition. So, for those of you that don't know what that is, it's basically just a club and an organization that's rooted around certain topics about mental health, drug use, and things of that sort, and also just a safe space for us to go and our peers to go, to just kind of, it's almost, it's a very accepting place. So, today, we're here to talk to you about an initiative we've been working on. It's our Campaign to Change Direction. So, basically, what that means, it's about mental health and just like how if you're in school and you're struggling, or if you see someone that's struggling, it's a way to learn to identify the five signs that are basically the big indicators of someone might not be okay, whether it's you or your peers. It's a good way to be able to make sure that you're in touch with those around you, so nothing drastic will happen, because that's very heartbreaking. So, we're actually here to tell you guys what we went around and did. So, we basically read this script to all of our homerooms over the course of several days, and we passed out cards, a little few things, we hung up a bunch of posters to really make sure kids knew that not only are there teachers to go to, peers, there's also, we have two school social workers who run another one of our clubs, our Peer Helping Network, who we partnered with on this. We have our wonderful coalition leaders, Jenny, Polly, and Rebecca, who can't all be here. So, it's basically just to make sure that all kids know that it's okay to not be okay. So, to start off, we went around and we read this. So, "We are here to introduce the Campaign to Change Direction. You may, you may have noticed the orange hands around the building. These hands symbolize the campaign. The Campaign to Change Direction is a national public health initiative to change the conversation around mental health. The goal of the campaign is to change negative attitudes about mental health so that everyone in need will receive the care and support they deserve. The campaign also encourages us to pay attention to our own mental health. It is just as important as caring for our physical health. Nearly 20% of adults are affected by a mental health disorder each year. Participating in this campaign is very easy. It simply requires that you recognize the five signs of emotional suffering, and when you see something, you say something. The five signs were designed so that individuals at any age could learn to identify the signs of emotional pain in others as well as themselves. The five signs are: personality change. You may notice a sudden or gradual change in the way someone typically behaves, including loss of interest, dropping grades, going out less, a change in appetite, mood swings, giving up easily, or confusion. Another sign is agitation. That is when, oh, uncharacteristically angry, anxious, agitated, or moody. You may notice the difficulty controlling their temper, including anxiousness, argumentative tendencies, hyperventilation, frustration, outbursts of emotion, abandoning certain relationships, a change in someone's sleep pattern, or a change in diet, along with a very defensive or scared mood. Another sign is withdrawal. Withdrawal or isolation from other people. Someone who used to be socially engaged may pull away from family and friends and stop taking part in activities that used to be engaging, including isolation, eating alone, acting distant, ignoring friends, rejecting invitations, and not attending practice or other social engagements. Another sign is poor self-care. This is when someone may neglect their self-care and may engage in more risky behavior. This includes a decline in hygiene, not dressing as usual, new slash increased substance use, stop of exercising, dirty clothing, not doing schoolwork or homework, poor nutrition, and dangerous driving. Another sign is hopelessness. Someone may be overcome by hopelessness, and overwhelmed by its circumstances. Some people may experience suffering from extreme grief or feeling worthlessness and guilt. The five signs are listed on the postcard that we handed out, and on the backside, there are five healthy habits of emotional well-being. It isn't, it is as important to take care of our mental health as it is to take care of our physical health. Some of the things we can do is if we notice a sign in someone or in yourself, reach out. Ask if they are okay. You can say something like, "I noticed you haven't seemed yourself lately, can I help?" Talk to a trusted adult, keep reaching out. And then, we gave them options to speak to our school resource officers and guidance counselors. Some upcoming opportunities we gave was to take the pledge. There was a photo booth we set up right outside our coalition room that we gave students the opportunity to take a picture and learn the five signs. Also, we did a lunch and learn series where we gave a series of activities that we held for the upcoming week, so that we did this, that we focused on healthy habits of emotional well-being. And then, we gave them where our coalition office is, so that if they have any questions or they need help, they could come and talk to us. Does anyone have any questions? It's all right if not. All right, well, thank you for listening to us, and we really appreciate it. We are sure we'll be here soon to address something else we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wait a minute, girls, wait one minute.
Oh, yes.
Dr. Watkins?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
So, I have on my phone
Oh, yes.
The five signs, and so when I talk on it, everyone asks me, so it introduces, and the funny story is, I wear one of these on me, but it doesn't stick all the time. So, when I was at the budget meeting the other night, someone said to me, "Sally, you have something on the bottom of your shoe." And I said, "What?" And I looked down, and it was a little hand.
Now, you have your pin.
Oh, no, I said, "No, I have the pin." But I said, "Oh, no, I stepped on the little hand," so I said, "Don't touch it, don't touch it." Yeah, no, it's good, it's really good, and I have the pledge in the back, and it just causes so much conversation. I have nephews in the school, and they said, "Oh, we know about the five signs," so I hope you're going to go pass it down to the middle and the elementary.
No, I think it's a good plan. I think with the younger grades, it has to be done in a
A different way, but still.
Yeah, just so it doesn't, so they can understand it, but I think middle school is definitely, this similar campaign is a really good idea.
Oh, that would be great, and thank you so much.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you, Jenny.
Okay. So, we are on item 10A, discussion budget history, the FY '20 budget. Dr. Sanquiony?
I'm going to wait for a slide to come up, and just It's okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cannavale. And so, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, up on the sports here, I know you're familiar with this presentation and these numbers, but just bringing you back to where we currently stand with the FY '20 budget, some historical numbers, and I see Ms. Black has already produced an excellent slide to show those mobile. So, the bottom number there is showing the increase in the FY '20 budget, operating budget, and then the town contribution, which came in at a 1.84% increase. But, here are the more important numbers of that, in that the, the budget number itself that was approved by the budget committee is the $31,442,700. And as you're aware, you had asked and requested a budget of $31,947,720, which leaves us a half million dollars short. If that is to remain, and that half million dollars needs to be accounted for in the current operating budget, and as you know, that $31.9 million was already a reduced budget from our original request, it had removed all new staff positions, had already reduced some of our expense accounts, and so that half million dollars really leaves us in a precarious situation. Importantly, that even with the requested number that the school committee had put forward, the $31.9 million, to balance, you were still going to use one-time money to fund this budget. So, again, I show this to you here, the in-house programming through Newport Collaborative, what the assessment is, almost $1.8 million, what was in the budget at $1.3 million, and your decision to cover the balance with $478,055 from the fund balance. Out-of-district placements, projected tuitions at $2.5 million, what's in the budget is $1.2, and your decision then to cover that delta with IDA grant money, $600,000, which $300 is a carryover, so it's one-time money, $496,302 from Medicaid, and $200,000 from the fund balance. So, all those numbers in red total to about $1.4, almost $1.5 million. So, you made a request of the budget committee, you didn't request the full needs of the school, you decided to use one-time's fund to show a concentrated effort in meeting some of these expenses, but the difficulty remains in the sense that, I'll just go back here, that we're still a half million dollars short. So, you're using one-time money to balance the budget, and yet, there's still this deficit that somehow has to be addressed. So, that's a significant point there. And then, just to kind of play this out for you, you know, Medicaid is a revenue stream that you decided to use, and a great decision to balance FY '19 and FY '20. And so, again, I won't read all these numbers here to you, but again, what I'm showing you is that once Medicaid is used for FY '19 and '20, there's going to be a small, about $250,000 remaining in that account. So, these, these revenue streams are not going to be available for future budgets like FY ' '21. And the same thing with the fund balance. You've used the fund balance wisely to do, to do new lights and ceiling tiles at both the middle school and the high school. You've used the fund balance to balance expenditures in FY '19 and set aside an amount to set, to address the deficit in FY '20. So, again, you know, you're going to have a little over half million dollars left barring no unforeseen circumstances in FY '20, which again, means this revenue stream's not going to be available for the school committee to consider in the FY '21 budget. And then, again, with gratitude, that the, the budget committee decided to fund some of the more pertinent and needed capital requests from the school committee, so you see this list here. I was able to have a conversation with representatives at Wright about what would be reimbursable here, and they believe the top three, maybe the top four. We have a meeting set up with them next week to go in and so forth, so in fact, maybe 35% of those expenses would be reimbursed back to the town, and we'll certainly pursue that with, with vigor to, to make sure they are approved projects. So, I will just bring you back to probably what, probably I'm sure what you want to discuss tonight on, is the budget that's currently approved by the budget committee, the budget you requested, and a difference that has to be made up.
Do you have a sense, so getting, so if we cover FY '19 and FY '20, what would be the ballpark percentage we would need to go? Assuming that special education costs sort of remain flat, don't go down, don't go up. By my estimation, it's something like 5% would need to be in next year's budget as the increase, just to cover those fixed, well, we are presuming will be fixed. It's possible they could go down. Special ed has historically fluctuated, but am I sort of in the right area?
You're in the right ballpark. So, if we just look at this year, and the maximum you request, and I'll round it up just a little bit, would have been a million dollars. So, with our budget only going up a small amount, and the max being 4%, you're probably going to be able to ask for 11, a million, a little over a million. Well, I'll come back to this slide. You're using 1.4 million in one-time funds, you already have to make that up.
Right.
So, going into FY '21, with the max, you're going to need a half million dollars to somehow cover what's necessary, and that's without adding any staff, without adding anything. So, that's, and that's if the town approved the max budget.
In, you know, making some pretty optimistic projections, if our state aid went up again next year by $600,000 or $700,000, that's 2%. So, we could theoretically, anyway, still balance the books at a 4% increase for FY ' '21. If there is an alternate, so there, you know, the charming, most charming, money charming aspects of the budget process in Tiverton is that a budget that is supported by 50 electors can appear on the ballot if we are level funded, or if there's a decrease in our budget by some other budget. You know, they, it is possible for the town to pass an illegal budget, and, and then you have to litigate it. But, where would the savings come from, or where would the cost cuts go right now? Because, you know, one of the things we were criticized for in 2015, I think it was 2015, was that everyone was really surprised when the budget was, the requested budget was cut. They didn't know it meant, you know, not having all daycare, or not having math specialists, or the virtual university or virtual school, high school, that we, you know, had tried to implement in that year. Can you speculate for us?
I think what you're asking me, make sure I'm on this, if the number comes in less than the 31.4, so just keep adding that delta to the half million dollars, and that's what we're going to need to cut from an existing operating budget that has no new staff and has already trimmed expense accounts. It's
Can you go back to the historical number slide? I think a point that can't be made too often is that the local contribution between, you know, from FY '15 to FY '19 is actually down. So, all of the increases in the overall budget have come from increases in state aid, even though, you know, as, as, as a recipient of state aid, we're sort of in the middle compared to districts, or sort of at the lower, lower tier, I would say, but, but the local contribution in FY '15 was 23.474, and now it's 23.455. So, we're actually, you know, down from where we were four years ago in terms of the total tax levy in the town.
Dr. Watkins?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
So, we have on here budget history, but I'm going to wait till later on to do that, because I have so many signs to carry. But, we hesitated to bifurcate this, because we went through a whole legal thing to say you have to put the whole number on, because that's the state law. But, it came to the point this year where we, we really had to, just to show everybody what had been happening.
Well, you can look at the numbers separately, you can't
No, but I'm just saying, we didn't even want to introduce it that way, because they've been trying to do that for so long. So, then we finally said, "No, this has to be shown." And when we did show this slide, people were saying, "That can't be, that's not right." I said, "No, it's not right." So, it was really, people were kind of taken aback, because they, they always saw that increase, and they thought it came from the taxpayers at Tiverton, from the town side. So, we couldn't have been any more responsible, as I said so many times these past years, and now this year, we really need support. We really need help just to move forward, and I hope that the community decides to support us in whatever we decide to do, or, you know, the community decides to do, that's all, you know?
Dr. Sanquiony, do you know when the transportation contract is up?
One more year.
So, it will impact us in fiscal '21?
Correct.
Are there any other large contracts coming due in the next year?
Right, you're settling Council 94 this year. Food service has one more year to go. I can't think of any, anything else that's impactful.
Well, in the NEA contract, we have 3.5% in the
FY '20, and then 3 in FY '21.
Right. So, but, 3.5% is in, I mean, so, if we are level funded, 3.5% has to be found somewhere in the budget we're talking about right now. But, going ahead to FY '21, where we will no longer have the funds to balance increased of special education costs, we're also looking at, I think it's about $600,000 to fund the 3.5%. Do I have that right? It's about $700,000, which is about 2%.
Yeah, the contract alone is about $400,000, $431,000, but, you know, again, you have to put steps and lanes and all that, and that brings it up to 1.2 million.
I don't think it can be that high.
You know, steps, lanes, the contract increase
Okay.
And longevity.
Okay.
I think, I mean, knowing those costs are at this point set, really, the only questions of significance would be potentially the transportation contract next year, and, you know, the settlement of the Council 94 contract. Those are the unknowns. And the third unknown, which I think is also important to remember, is that our increase in state aid this year was much higher than normal. I, for one, will not pretend that we will get that again, seeing such an outlier this year. So, I mean, that's also something for us to remember, that next year, we won't very likely have that kind of bump from the state to, to help support us. Once we get to the final allocation appropriation, whatever that number may be, then I think it's time for us to, you know, sit down and make some difficult decisions on exactly how we're going to approach fiscal '20, and even come up with a tentative plan for '21, because we're, you know, well aware of the challenges in front of us.
Yeah, so I think, I, I think you are correct. So, the 3.5% alone is about $700,000, and then, there's another $400,000, $500,000 in lane changes and steps. So, and that's 4% right there, we're only of the, or roughly 3.5% of the total budget. Okay. Why is everyone laughing? Elaine, Sally, anything else? Diane? Administrators? Comments, questions? Members of the public? All six of you, seven of you? Thank you for coming. So, one of the things we discussed last meeting was, the school by, the school district by charter can place its budget on the ballot. I think at this point, I would recommend we not do that, because there are groups in town who are planning an alternative budget with those 50 signatures. We would have to do that day after tomorrow in order to do that, but I think we have, there are some groups working in town to fashion a more reasonable budget. budget than the one put forward by the budget committee. So, unless anyone else has any other thoughts about that, I would recommend we not take that up at this point. Oh. Well, that, that was my opinion. I don't know if any other member of the committee cares to-
That's mine also.
... comment on that or make a motion otherwise.
No, that's mine also. I agree with Dr. Larkin.
I agree with you, too.
The community members, it would be good if they came together.
Yeah, and I think it will be important to have community groups show they, you know, sort of hopefully in an organically arrived-at solution, that they support the, not just the schools, but the entire town and what we need to do to move forward. We have some real opportunities in front of us, and we actually have some flexibility in municipal finance right now that I think we can all benefit from, so. Okay? Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Look at that, 11B, FY '19 budget update? Have we perseverated on this enough? Is there anything else? Sally, you said you wanted, maybe wanted to talk additionally, or do you have other slides? Dr. Senkione?
No, no, I said that I'll do that when it's closer to the vote, vote.
Oh, you mean in May?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. All right. Yep, agreed. Okay.
Dr. Senkione, you had mentioned perhaps you'd be getting updated reports.
For FY '19?
Yep.
Yes. And I have those here for you. So, the chart I'm passing out to you now, there's no difference than the one that's in your packet, other than if you just go to the exact last page, page five. We had not put the totals in. And so, the grand total line is now added in there. There was a cover document that was prepared by Mr. Crowley that did some explanation on this budget. So, this is, again, showing you where we currently lie for FY '19, and you're gonna see some overages throughout these accounts. But there's a couple of key points to make here. Money that's been charged to the operating budget that should have come out of, that will come out of the fund balance and/or Medicaid is still in here. So, it's gonna look like we're overspending some accounts that really just have to have that money credited differently. So, the reason we're providing you this document tonight is to give you some confidence that FY '19 will balance when those adjustments are made. The most important line that I would call your attention to in here is the first line, regular salary. So, as you know, salaries make up 80% of our budget. And so, if you go across the lines there, where we stand for FY '19 on this date is a 61.42% spend-down. And if you compare it to FY '18, it's a 61.35%. So, you can see we're tracking in our biggest account right online. So, that tells me that this budget is probably, not probably, is gonna come in balanced with the adjustments made by crediting back to fund balance and to Medicaid. Now, certainly, we have to keep tracking this, and as Mr. Crowley's document showed you, the date we published this has so many variances. There could have been a bill that came in for special ed that wasn't in last year's. There could have been a bill for something, you know, anything that came in a certain date that wasn't on the same date of last year. So, the number-one account you can really look at, and we can match payrolls, is that payroll, is the top line. And again, with 80% of your account, of your revenue coming in that line, if that tracks well, everything else will be fine.
Now, we had attempted to start a regular reporting, and I want to go back to that. And there is a version of this that pulls out all of the capital spending that we've done year-to-date, and I'd like that put back on.
Yep.
And I'd also like a comparison to last year at this time so that we can be looking at apples to apples. It's, I think it's important for us, you know, one of the things that's been fairly tight, looking for perhaps opportunities for efficiencies as we go through. I mean, I understand 85% of our expenses are salaries and benefits. I totally get that. But there are other items that are flexible, and I think we need to be more, having more regular discussions about these things and, you know, doing our job, questioning and saying, "Okay, well, we've spent X in," I don't know, reference books this year. I'm just picking it up, you know? And that's 400% of our budget. What happened? It's not true, but, you know, but it's these types of things that we, as a committee, really should be looking at. And I'm hoping that, you know, we are 75% of the way through this fiscal year. It certainly does appear that we will track, although I can't really tell from this. And so, hopefully, we can get to more consistent reporting and regular reporting and actual discussion over some of the pieces, except for, you know, not just that budget time year-round.
I'm just gonna respectfully disagree. We may not have done budget to actuals every month. I think we have kept an eye on-
Without reports, we, how could we?
Maybe not budget to actual on a monthly basis, but I do feel that the budget has had a lot of attention, including by our finance subcommittee.
We have, we have to an extent. I will say that. It's just, I want this whole committee to really be fully aware. You know, we account for well over half of this town's expenses, and I think it's part of our job to be looking at this closely. Granted, a lot of it is certainly not changeable on a regular basis, but we should be aware of what we're spending.
Okay. But some of the accusations levied at us by members of the budget committee had no credence and had nothing to do with that.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I just don't want to conflate the two-
No, 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 no.
That-
I agree.
There may not have been budget to actuals in the last two months. However, it was pretty clear to me that that was not the agenda of the members of the budget committee that voted against us.
Oh, no, no.
Their agenda was political and partisan. Yes, Elaine, I'm sorry.
I wanted to say that I do agree with Diane in part. Over a year ago, I had brought up the fact that we should receive a monthly report outlining every account that we have and where money might have been spent during that month. And that's really how you can tell what you've got left. And it was a budget by object, and I know it's, it's, it's an old document. And I had asked for it twice, maybe three times, and got a report that showed almost nothing. If you, if you track your accounts by month, you know what you've spent, you know what you've got left. And I just think that's a much better way to watch-
Okay.
-our numbers and our money.
Duly noted.
And I think, Dr. Larkin, just as far as the budget committee and others, their consistent criticism over our fund balance, you know, that it's been accumulating for the last several years, it's been out there, it's in the annual audit. There is nothing that has been hidden.
And I guess that's my point.
Yeah, absolutely not. Nothing's been hidden in that regard. It's out there in the audits. We, you know, we do reconciliation, we know what's in there, we know what, if we have a surplus at the end of the year, there's your deposit. And a lot of that is subject to the audit rules as well. But, you know, it's, we as a body have never wanted to be anything but completely transparent with the finances of the district. And for those in town that will readily accuse us of trying to hide anything, it's just completely baseless.
With that, I can respectfully agree.
Thank you.
Mrs. Black, care to pile on? All right. Enough of that? All right. Item 12, announcements, scheduled meetings, reports. We're just noting the dates of the next two school committee meetings are on April 23rd and May 14th. Any announcements from our administrators? Good. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Dr. Larkin, just one thing?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
Elaine and I went to the Vote on Association of School Committees the other Saturday, and it was very good. It was about legislation, and they just talked about all the things that are coming up in this session. And it was really a very relaxed give-and-take. It was very good. And I gave them what we think about everything. I hope you don't mind. Thank you.
Never mind you're telling us what you think about things.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor? That's a wrap.